Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting. Regular session for Thursday, January 6, 2022. This is our very first regular session meeting of the year. And I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have the roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Mensah?
Here.
Mr. Sternad?
Here.
Thank you. I would note that Councilmember Atkins is joining us remotely today. This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Since this is our first meeting of the year, we have a few members here who will be taking the oath of office this evening. I will come down front and then I'll call you down one by one. And I'll start with the longest-serving member, Randy Sternad.
I just want to express my appreciation to all four members who are taking the oath tonight, as well as all the council members. It takes a lot of time and commitment to serve our city in this manner, and it's a it's a humbling experience and it's an honor. And it's also a big commitment. I really appreciate everyone who's serving at this time on the council. I think we have the very best council around. I think we have I say this all the time. We have seven people who are who all love Marion, but none of them have an agenda. Their only agenda is seeing Marion thrive, and we don't always agree on everything, but that's how it should be. And everyone, I think, is well-meaning and has the best interests of the city at heart. And it makes for a great team and really appreciate and appreciate everything that you all do. Okay.
So raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, Randy Sternad.
I, Randy Sternad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
So this is the third oath of office that Randy's taking. He actually, when I became mayor, filled in the remainder of my term for one, 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 one of those years, and then was elected again and now re-elected. So congratulations, Randy. Mr. Jensen. This is Steve's second time taking the oath of office.
Hi, Steve Jensen.
Hi, Steve Jensen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Harper. Grant was appointed to fill the remainder of the term of Councilmember Draper, and he just won reelection to that seat for the next two years, and then we'll have to run again after after two years, so.
I, Grant Harper.
I, Grant Harper.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge the duties of office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, our newest council member serving her first term, Sarah Mensah. Mark and Izzy, you can come and take a picture afterwards if you'd like. Okay.
I, Sarah Mensah.
I, Sarah Mensah.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
The ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Welcome aboard.
I'm not standing by the call.
Okay, while I'm down here, we have a proclamation this evening in honor of proclaiming Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Marion. And we have Brett Nellis from the Marion Civil Rights Commission here to accept the proclamation. Okay. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's example and teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service. And whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas the city of Marion is committed to equality, social justice, and greater opportunity for all people. And whereas residents of Marion, Iowa have the opportunity to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy on the King Day of Service, January 17, 2022, by participating in service projects throughout our community. Now, therefore, I, Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a day of service in Marion and call upon the residents of the community to pay tribute to the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Day Jr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day and throughout the year.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of Marion City Council. I receive this as a member of the community. I live at 69 East Tagway Sleep Lane. As a member of the Marion Civil Rights Commission and as a member of the community. And always just want to remind people that it is just one day that is recognized, but it's a day that we should all keep in our hearts to do our best to serve our community in terms of equality, justice, and helping our neighbors. So thank you.
Okay. Moving on with our meeting. The first item on the agenda is a public forum, which is a time that is set aside for comments by members of the public on any item that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If there are any comments related to a public hearing, there will be time for comments at that time, and if there are any comments on items that are not on this agenda, there will also be a later time on the agenda for those comments. At this time, we'll take any comments regarding topics listed on the agenda but not part of a part of a public hearing. Anyone wish to address the council, please come forward. Okay, seeing there are none, we'll move on with the consent agenda. Mr. Harper?
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F1, Resolutions 30182 through 30194.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, Resolutions 30182 through 30194. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. For the next section of the agenda, I'll turn over the meeting to the new mayor pro temp. Mayor Pro Temp, Brandt.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention. This will include items E1 through F1, Resolution numbers 30195 through 30197.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It has been approved with one abstention. Now move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I move, Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 30198, adopting a COVID-19 vaccination policy.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 30198, adopting the COVID-19 vaccination policy for the city. Discussion. All those in favor of approving Resolution number 30198, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
May I move to approve Resolution number 30199, approving investment management agreement with custody and custody agreement with U.S. Bank National Association.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Brandt, seconded by Councilmember Sternad to approve Resolution number 30199, approving the new investment management agreement and custody agreement with U.S. Bank National Association. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution number 30199, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-01, amending Chapter 99 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from $4.39 to $4.60. Initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 22-01, amending Chapter 99 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from $4.39 to $4.60. Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just, based on the slide that is provided here, I just, I think it's important to realize this is, this increase is an externally induced pricing in increase due to the change in Cedar Rapids wastewater treatment fees that are being charged to us.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance number 22-01, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 30200, authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the assistance to firefighters' grant, the AFG, to assist in the purchase of new radio equipment in the amount not to exceed $530,000.
Second. Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Sternad, seconded by Councilmember Harper to approve Resolution number 30200, authorizing the submittal of grant application to the assistance to firefighters' grant for assistance in the purchase of a new radio equipment in the amount not to exceed $530,000. Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Yeah, Chief, can, do you have any insights as to the sort of the timeline that this would unfold and funding be made available?
Yes, I apologize for the late notice on this. The application is actually due next week. Our deputy chief Hanson and battalion chief Cam Ford have been preparing this document. As you know, we applied for the grant earlier. It did not, was not, it was not accepted or approved. So we found out that they are offering it again, so we're trying to beat the timeline and get it in. But if you have any questions, Battalion Chief Cam Ford is here to answer any questions on this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All right, we'll vote. Or you have?
No.
Something?
No.
Okay.
Nothing else.
All those in favor of approving Resolution number 30200, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Good luck.
Your Honor, I move to direct staff to apply for Lynn County, City of Cedar Rapids, ARPA funding for sanitary sewer projects.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to apply to Lynn County and the city of Cedar Rapids for ARPA funding for the sanitary sewer projects. Discussion. And for purposes of the the public, we did go on, at our work session on Tuesday, receive details on which projects we would be applying for, so. Okay. No discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion has been approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding a request to amend the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan regarding a request to rezone property located north of Twixtown Road and west of Marion Boulevard. This is the former Hames parcel. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, yes, we do. The following, as indicated, is a request to rezone property as well as amend the city's future land use map to accommodate a residential multifamily development at the north and west corner of Twixtown Road and Marion Boulevard, as indicated in the map above. There are two items associated with the public hearing. The first is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and as the council is aware, and for the public's purposes, the city does have a comprehensive plan. It's a 10-year plan for the community on how it should grow, and it outlines land uses to accommodate future development as well as redevelopment within the community. In order to proceed to a rezoning, the the rezoning request needs to be consistent with the city's long-range plan. In this instance, it is a redevelopment area, and the proposal is different than the city's comprehensive plan, but through our review process and analysis that I'll walk through, it's been determined that it would it would be an accommodating use, and there are factors that are considered as we go through that process. As indicated, it's a four-acre site, and I identified the location. The project is a proposed four-story, 93-unit multifamily building as well as a six-unit townhouse development. The the proposed land use, as I had indicated, would change to a from a from a commercial designation to a multifamily designation. And we feel that based on the review and the project and the location, that this is an accommodating use to move forward with. The city did receive the application for both the land use amendment and the rezoning. It went to the city's planning commission on December 14. The commission heard comments from the adjacent property owners during that public hearing process. There were some comments made by the owners to the northeast of the property related more specifically to the end of the the site plan that is also will be proposed and will be brought forward to the city council, but there were concerns with the zoning as well. The ultimately, though, the commission did recommend approval to the city council to proceed with the land use map amendment as well as the rezoning. I would point out that we did do notices as a part of that public hearing process and went out to the adjacent property owners and provided that notice via signs as well as postcards. And I think if you move to the next slide, this is the rezoning request, and as indicated, this is going to move into a PUD ordinance. So we're moving into a planned unit development ordinance, zoning district classification, and this allows the developer to submit a site plan for the project. We get to review that kind of independently. It's not tied to specific zoning district regulations. There will be a separate review process. There'll be a preliminary site development plan that'll come to the city council for review after it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. There'll be a public hearing for for that process as well, and then the council will also get to see that detailed site plan. I'd point out, for the purposes of what we're here tonight for, it's it's the land use map amendment and the rezoning only. We will see a detailed preliminary site development plan at a later date. One of the reasons to proceed in this manner is there's a lot of cost associated with moving with everything at one time. So there wants, there wants, there, there's a desire to have some entitlements before they proceed to the detailed engineered drawings and architectural drawings associated with the project. There were in the packet a number of concepts, and and those were helpful for us to understand what type of project was being brought forward. They are, they were illustrated at the at the planning commission meeting, and I think it derived a lot of comments and questions. And I think between now and the next meeting, pending, pending authorization to proceed with the rezoning, there'll be a lot of vetting of those plans, and then we'll have further recommendations. So I think a lot of the questions that the applicant or the adjacent properties have be able to address between now and that meeting. With that, I would just if there's questions during the public hearing, I'd be available for any of those questions, but the planning commission did recommend approval of both the land use map amendment and the rezon.
Thanks, Tom. At this time, the public hearing is open, and we would ask for anyone who's here to address the council, either in favor or in opposition of this measure, to please come forward. If you're going to address the council, please state your name and address. Anyone here to address the council? Were you going to? Okay. Just wanted to make sure you understood this is the time to do that, if you're going to address the council on this on this matter.
But it only pertains to the zoning, correct?
This is, this is for the zoning, correct? Okay.
It's not our issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, please come forward, state your name and address. You represent the developer, correct?
Correct. My name is Josh Kruger, located at 1305 East Benson Road, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I represent the developer, which is Talon LLC, as well as the ownership group, which is Boulevard Apartments LLC, for this proposed project. Tom did a great job explaining kind of the background about what we're here tonight to discuss and vote on. But the one thing that I did want to make clear on why we went after a PUD rezone versus a multifamily residential district was just the density requirements with a smaller parcel of land. That is the one change, that's the one notable change between between the two types of zoning that that pushed us to the PUD. We, I think we're, we were allowed about 75 units total with the standard multifamily zoning, but with the PUD and having four stories, it didn't quite match up. So so the PUD does give us the the ability to increase the the density of units per acre. Outside of that, on standard multifamily zoning requirements, we're going to match the multifamily zoning pretty pretty closely. So we're not asking for a lot of leniency on any of the other setbacks or required buffer zones or parking spaces or anything like that. We're going to try to fit fit to an actual zoning that's already in place as as close as we possibly can.
that's already in place as, as close as we possibly can. But as far as the comprehensive plan amendment and update goes, you know, the, this, this parcel, parcels that we're, we're recommending for the change, you know, they're, they're right in between the general commercial, some single-family detached, some single-family attached, as well as some other commercial slash residential properties. And, you know, the, the highest and best use of something like this would be to try to further buffer some of the commercial from single-family houses, and we our proposed initial site plan does that fairly well with trying to keep the large apartment building next to the adjacent commercial and some of our site amenities towards the residential as well as a residential-style townhouse next to the single-family detached with many different types of buffer zones, whether it be natural or retaining walls or fences. We kind of have all of that laid out, and we think, we think we can fit very well in this neighborhood, so.
Thank you. Any, any questions? For the applicant? Okay, well, I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've used in, in, in a difficult site to, to, to develop and trying to buffer between the rest, the residential and, and the large building. And we just asked that as we go forward and work with the staff, we, we welcome you here, we appreciate your interest in Marion, and we want you to succeed. Would ask that you work with the staff to give us your best and to give the, to, to give the city of Marion your, your, your best. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Leighton Council, Nick Glue, President of Marion Economic Development. I just wanted to provide a little context as this project kind of begins to move forward with this action that you'll take here this evening. This is really a result of great partnership, work, work with lots of people to get to this point. Sometimes when we talk about public policy at the state level, we, we oftentimes lose, lose the connections and how they play out in our communities. This is a great example of how last year with the expansion of the workforce housing tax credits, this was one of two projects that without that work would not be here today leveraging those tax credits in partnership with local municipal support. So this was a project that really, I was looking at my notes sitting back there, it was over, it was about a year ago that we first met this team and began talking about the necessity for advocating for that policy, which Josh's boss was very familiar with and worked to advocate together with a multitude of folks, and so today, I think this is a great project that's playing out at the gateway of our community, and from a land use standpoint that you're contemplating tonight, I think it's important to realize that, you know, this property had been on the market for a couple of years, and some of the best options that we had seen included self-storage units and gas stations, and so we're really pleased to see the quality of project that now is proposed to move forward here on this significant gateway to our community, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other comments? From anyone in, in the, in the audience for, for the council? Okay. Have we received any comments outside this meeting?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Note that for the public record, and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number three zero two zero one, amending the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from Corridor, from Corridor Commercial to multifamily residential for property located at 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard, Marion, Iowa. This is brought by Talon LLC.
Second. It's moved in seconded. To approve Resolution Number three zero two zero one, amending the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from Corridor Commercial to multifamily residential for property located at 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard. Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so just to reaffirm my understanding, Tom, everything that was in the packet in terms of anything relative to the site development specifics and building aesthetics and all of that, that is yet to be determined. That really was just more diagnostic for how that property might be utilized, correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number three zero two zero one, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance Number twenty-two dash oh-two, approving a request to rezone property from C3 General Commercial and R6 High Density Multifamily Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development for property located at 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard, Marion, Iowa. Talon LLC, initial consideration.
Second. It's moved in seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance Number twenty-two dash zero-two, proving the request to rezone from C3 General Commercial and R6 High Density Multifamily Residential to planned unit development for the property at 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I'm glad this is coming through as a PUD instead of multifamily because that will give city council an opportunity to look at it as the steps progress. This is a tricky corner, also with that intersection, so I know there's a lot of people concerned specifically, and myself included, about the traffic flow. So as you work on that plan, I think definitely the staff is going to have some comments about that, and hopefully those are all worked out ahead of time as it goes through P&amp;Z and the city council, but again, glad to see the project there. I think it's a good use for that corner compared to some of the others that Nick had mentioned. This is a much better use, so glad to see that happening, but again, I think traffic flow is going to be a key aspect that we're going to be looking at very closely.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance Number twenty-two dash zero-two, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number three zero two zero-two, approving payment to P&amp;N Flight and Charter associated with days closed due to sanitary sewer extension project in the amount of $7,200.
Second. It moved in seconded to approve Resolution Number three zero two zero-two, approving the payment to P&amp;N Flight and Charter associated with days closed during sanitary sewer extension project in the amount of $7,200. Discussion.
Your Honor, just a comment? Yeah, I just, I, I really think that P&amp;N put forward a valid set of reasons for this, and so I certainly support this request.
Okay. Other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number three zero two zero-two, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. This time, we have another public comment section for any item that is not on the agenda or any item at all that anyone would like to address the council with regard to.
Your Honor, do you have the other department discussion section?
We do.
That's unusual.
Excuse me, yes.
Snuck it in.
I like.
Well, and I asked for this to be put on the agenda, so, oh, this is, I've asked for a discussion among the council members regarding our council office hours. So six years ago, when I started my first mayor, mayor term, we, we started weekly office hours at the library. It was one more way that we could engage with members of the public, one more way that we could make ourselves available to not only receive comments and input from the public, but to also just get to know people and to share information, because there's so much happening in our city, and there's so much change that it's important to get the right set of facts out and to, and to answer questions directly that, that people have. And we've done it for six years now. We did get a little sidetracked with COVID, and then, then, then the library being out of, out of commission, you know, while we build the new, the new library and the derator damage to the old library. So we've, we've, we've had great success being at the farmers markets during the nice weather months. We've tried Hy-Vee, it's not ideal, I, I have to admit, but I just wanted to get a sense of what the council members feel we should do with these going forward. Open for discussion. Anyone? Go ahead, Grant.
I, first, I want to say, for the summer months, when we were at the various markets, that was a great experience. I mean, people were coming by, certainly it's a leisure time activity for families, and it, it was just amazing the level of contact that we had, and even people from out of town would stop and chat and just, you know, kind of want to know what's going on in Marion. The only problem with going to the farmers markets is, is, is somebody like me get not getting to the sausage breakfast sandwich venue fast enough, and you didn't get any because they were sold out, that was a problem. But nonetheless, I thought the outdoor venues were, were really great. The Hy-Vee experience, I, I just not entirely sure that that was an optimized use of time. People are in there for a mission, to get something from the store, to get their Starbucks, and to get wherever else they want to, want to be on a Saturday morning. And that doesn't mean to say, at least my experience has been, you know, I, I recruited a few folks to come up and talk to me, and then all of a sudden, because they knew somebody, I would have a small crowd around me, but other than that, it was a little, it, it was a little sparse in terms of its effectiveness, and so I think we should, I'm certainly looking forward to when the library opens up to co-locate there and do so with, with, with great vigor. I think that'll be a great location to be.
Yeah, my comments are exactly the same as Grant's, except just to let you know when he got that crowd of people around him, he was dressed as Santa Claus. So that's the reason all those kids were around him and, and asking questions.
Fake news.
But, no, my comments are exactly the same. The farmers markets were terrific, people are at a casual pace. Hy-Vee, nothing against Hy-Vee, it's just that, again, just like Grant says, the people are running in and out. So again, looking forward to the library. I'm in total support of continuing our presence at the, at the library when it opens up. The Hy-Vee is less than optimal.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Mayor, I've only done this once, and I'm new, and I did do one of the, the hours at Hy-Vee. Santa Claus was there, and there was a lot of people at breakfast, so I was probably at an advantage because where we were set up, everybody waiting to sit down had to stand in front of me. So I got to talk to a lot of people or include them in conversation, so I understand it's, it's difficult at that location, eh, but I, I do like the idea of meeting people where they are. I think coming new to the council, you know, it is an intimidating thing to come in and talk somewhere, or, and you usually aren't just calling somebody up for casual conversation, so really getting a pulse for someone living here who is, you know, just enjoying what we have in Marion. I'd like to see ways that we are at the library, but maybe we are also at a few other locations because maybe not everybody's at the library, and that we continue those opportunities to be present as the council on a regular basis, library and wherever else we would find to be.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, yes, I see Colette has her hand up.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, big picture, this is what, what a neat way to engage our community and to speak to what you had said earlier, Mayor, about this council not having their own agenda, right? That's why, one of the reasons why we want to do office hours is so we can hear what our constituents are thinking about, what things do they have questions about, what are they celebrating in our community, and what opportunities do they see for us in the community, which we get both of those, right, when we're talking to these folks? I think Sarah said something that I was thinking about was this variety piece, right? So we're out at the parks, we're at Hy-Vee, we're at the library. I think during COVID, we attempted to be available via phone during a certain period of time, which we didn't get a great response to. But of course, we all have our email and our telephone numbers posted for folks to reach out to us at any point in time. Along those lines, though, where I'm going is very much in support of this. I wonder if we should think about other locations and other modalities, right? I mean, social media is a big part of our younger group of folks that are in our community. So should we be having office hours through, I don't know, Facebook Live, or, I, I don't know what that is, but I think that's something for us to continue to think about is, how do we continue to be accessible? Office hours is a great way to do that, but does that always mean that we're at the library from nine to 11 on Saturday mornings?
Thank you. Will?
Yeah, if we're going to have them at other locations, I'll volunteer to be at the Uptown Coffee Company in Uptown, so. No, I, the mayor said, no, anyway. I'm in favor of continuing to do them. Again, I'll echo the park and, and Hy-Vee, what they said, same, same comments. And I, I think maybe we just hold off, my opinion, hold off in, in reinstating them until the library is open and then we, and we start back up at the library. Honestly, because I'm not sure where else it would go right now to have anybody stop by to, to see us, or where there's people at. So yeah, I would, I would be in favor of continuing.
Okay. Randy, do you have anything?
I do, yes, thank you. I want to just echo everyone else's comments up here. I, it's been a joy to visit with people that have a part of our community, they've moved into some of the up, the uptown areas there. I've, I've engaged in some families with young children. You know, and just to that point that council member Grant was speaking to, you know, the, the atmosphere is just a little bit more relaxed, and people are a little bit more willing to stop and visit a little bit. I visited with a gal that, her and her husband moved to town here. He was diagnosed with a medical condition that requires very frequent trips to the University of Iowa, and they were trying to figure out how they were going to make this work, and they just chose to pick up stakes and relocate to Marion. They, they moved their residence from South Dakota, so it's truly interesting to see the culture of our people in our community and parents that have just followed children that have graduated from one of the local colleges here and just decided to make this home instead of relocating back to California, so I okay the same things everybody has up here. It's just great opportunities and just a wonderful, wonderful time that, you know, to get on an eyeball to eyeball is what I like to call it, opportunity to visit with people, so great, great, great opportunities.
Well, I, I'm encouraged by everyone's support. I, I, I see a lot of value in it, and I'm encouraged by just to see that everyone else sees value in it and, and in continuing it. And we've had a little bit of a difficult time in getting people signed up and staffing lately, and it could be just due to various reasons, but I agree that Hy-Vee is not the ideal. We've been, we, we're trying, we always try to go where people are. We could have them at City Hall, but we, we've, we've always thought to go where people are already going to be, and it makes it easier, and then, you know, the people stop and talk and ask questions, and again, I think it's such a important, first of all, for people, for the, for the, for the city, for residents to see that we're trying, I think is, is, is a big, is a big deal, to see that we're trying to everywhere we can to reach out and to be accessible and to be available to answer questions and to take input. I think with all the change and all the things that we have going on, it's important to be able to have a message, a message from, directly from us as the elected leaders as to what's going on and why it's happening and to, to, to put out the right facts. We hand out a lot of Marion swag, we hand out materials that, that Amber puts together. There's so many positives from it, and to me, one of the biggest positives, and this is what I, I wanted to stress, was when we first started having these, we had two people sign up, and sometimes we'd have three people show up, and sometimes we'd have a, we'd, we'd run a we'd have a, we'd run a, you know, a risk of violating the quorum requirements. So and somebody would have to leave. So we, I'd like to get back to that of having at least two people sign up because it's also a time when we, we as council members, get to talk and get to just, you know, get to know each other if you don't know each other or get to just to talk and check in on things. So there's so many positives from it, and I'm really encouraged to see that the council wants to continue it. I think Amber and I have been kind of looking for that kind of guidance of what does the council want to do with these? And do we have commitment to continue? And I think we got that. So I really appreciate everybody's commitment to continue with them. And we will be back at the library as soon as the new library opens. And we are taking the month of January off. We'll see what we're going to do about February. But appreciate everybody's input. Think that's good for that discussion. You have one more?
Yeah, go ahead. Just, it was brought up about going to other places, too. And I'm just sitting here thinking about that. And I think it might be best if we didn't do that, just so that people know that we're, okay, it's Saturday morning. Oh, I need, I wanted to talk to someone, and I know they will be at the library, instead of trying to figure out where they're at for that Saturday morning. Or in the summertime, they know we're at Toby Park, every farmer's market, or they know when it's not farmer's market, we're at the library. That way, it's easier for them to find us and for us to be more accessible versus this week where we're here, this week where we're there, this week we're over there. So.
I agree.
Just a thought.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll get back to our public forum, which is the time to set aside for comments from members of the public on any item that is not on the agenda, any item at all. Anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. Okay, seeing there are none, we will move on to council comments. I'd asked the members who were, who took the oath of office this evening, if they wanted to, if they had any comments that they wanted to give after they took the oath. And we decided that they would save their comments for the member, for the council comments section. So we'll start with Mr. Harper.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to express my appreciation for the trust that the citizens of Marion have placed in me. It's an honor to have another two years to serve, especially in completing the original term that Mr. Paul Draper was elected to. My objective is to continually try to reach higher and to help Marion grow and prosper for the benefit of our citizens and our businesses. We have a lot of challenges in that regard, you know, but the fact of the matter is, I think we have the right long-term view for the community. And finally, I commit to work in a very positive and beneficial manner with our city leadership and also commit to work in the same fashion with my colleagues here in the dais. Thank you.
And so I appreciate everybody's support on the reelection. So I just completed my first four-year term. Unfortunately, this one's only going to be two years until the next reelection. But the one thing is that I've noticed in being on here for the last four years, first of all, I've lived in Marion since nineteen sixty-two. So I've seen a tremendous amount of change in the city. What has really been neat is all of the change that has occurred in the last four years. So when you talk to people who haven't been back here for a while, and they drive around, and even people that live in Cedar Rapids, and they come to Marion, and they see the changes that are happening, it's really neat and exciting to know that you were part of that. So I'm looking forward to working with this city council, with the city staff. Both of those groups I know are exceptionally strong. Looking forward to the next two years and continuing to try to make a difference for the city.
Thank you. Colette?
Yeah, thanks. Just quickly, Sarah, welcome. So glad to have you. I can't wait to actually get to work with you face to face, hopefully next city council meeting. And congratulations to Grant, Steve, Sarah, and Randy. I just am super excited to continue to serve with this team. I've learned so much, and I have so much more to learn. So you haven't gotten rid of my question asking just yet. So glad to have you guys stick it out with us. And then, secondly, or I guess it's thirdly, is just wanted to thanks, you know, I'm thankful that we figured out how to do this remote thing. It's allowed me to continue to participate, as I, as many of you know, get through the whole COVID thing that it seems like is going around these days. So after today, I'd be able to get out of quarantine and come back to a face-to-face experience in in the next time we get together. So that's all I've got.
Good to see you're feeling better. Will, go ahead.
Also, congratulations to everyone for their reelection and welcome to Sarah. Forward to working with everyone going forthwith. Did I use that right? Big words. I don't know how to use them like Grant, so I gotta.
Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'm very honored to be here. I'm looking forward to the next four years and all that this great team can accomplish for our community. I've served for years as a volunteer and have worked with a number of staff and this leadership team and the council, other volunteers in the community, and I just know how great it is. And it just, you can see it all around when we drive down our streets and see the progress and the things that are happening here. We see it because it's just a great team working together, and I'm honored to be a part of it. So open to conversations, love to meet people, and love to be around all that's happening. So thank you, and I look forward to it. And congratulations to the rest of my council members who are pro-election and look forward to working with you.
Randy? Thank you, Mayor. Boy, somebody gets mayor pro tem, and all of a sudden, wearing the big words again here. So it's hard to keep up. I just wanted to say thank you as well, too. There's an old saying that goes, clothes only matters in horseshoes and local elections. So what I like to point out to people, I've talked to the Lynn County Auditor's Office in the last eight weeks more than I have in my lifetime. And I just like to encourage people to understand that your votes do matter and to sit back and think, well, it's not, you know, my vote's not going to matter. It doesn't. Over eight thousand votes were recalculated, recounted on the ballots, and it came down to a matter of three. So though our city would have been well-served in either one, I'm super glad to be here today and continuing, sitting in this seat. I served, I'm huge in my day job as far as in the insurance and finance world of getting engaged in your community and giving back. We, I'm in an entity where I ask you to sign a piece of paper and give me lots of money and give you protection on the backside. And so for us to extend that by getting involved and engaged in our community, my wife and I are both heavily engaged in our community. I served eight years on the Marion Fire Department as a paid-on-call volunteer firefighter, and then decided to take an opportunity and a leap of faith to to jump to the city council level. And I couldn't be more prouder and excited, working with the staff, the city staff, super excited about working with our new city manager. I mean, we just have so many things going on and being able to bring some of that past history forthwith and working with individuals going forward. I'm just super proud. So I'd like to thank the voters that did vote for me and, you know, continue the legacy of moving forward with everything that we have going on. So thank you so much. And I'm, it'll be my pleasure to continue to keep serving. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Just as an aside, I had to remind Councilmember Harper earlier this week, English is my third language, so he totally couldn't use all those big words.
It's my first, and I don't.
He's gotta use words I can understand.
Chief Kitzmiller, they're picking on me.
For my part, I'm beginning my seventh year as mayor, my ninth year on council, and I'm just as energized and as excited today as I was in that first year and as I've been in the last twenty-plus years, working in the community, working on whatever committee and boards and commissions and steering committees, whatever it was that I was able to allow to participate in, trying to move Marion in a positive direction. I believe so much in in the potential of Marion, and that's what excites me. I think we have such a unique opportunity. We, when I, when I first became mayor, you know, Marion was kind of just out there. We weren't really highly regarded in the in the region. We weren't at the table a lot. We weren't part of the equation. And now all eyes are on Marion, not because of any one person, but because of everybody here working together, everybody going in the same direction, everybody being on the same page and and wanting to see it happen. We have such a great opportunity. We have excellent staff. We have a supportive city council. We have a new city manager who comes with high qualifications. All our city leadership, I couldn't be more proud and to be on this team. And like I said, the potential and the opportunities, and that's really what I, you know, what I see my job as is, is helping people see the opportunity here, helping investors, helping business owners, helping new residents see the opportunity, whether you're a resident to see the opportunity to enjoy a great quality of life, whether you're a business, to see the opportunity to do well in business here and to serve this community. And there's just, there's so much potential here. The quality of life is amazing, the opportunities for people to achieve whatever goals they have for themselves and their businesses are there. What we do with that opportunity is up to us, you know, with that potential. It really is up to us. And I really appreciate everyone working hard. I challenge us all to continue reaching even higher with everything we do, to ask for the best, to expect the best from ourselves and to expect the best from others, and to continue providing the best services to the residents of Marion and giving them an equal quality of life. When you see how the outlook of this community has been transformed in the last few years, where people really are so excited about what's going on, they're so proud of where they live, and they're going out and telling all their friends, it's really an exciting time. We have our challenges, like every other city. But as I always say, you know, we also have so much to be happy about, so much to be proud of. And it's really a result of the hard work of everyone collaborating and cooperating together and being, going in the same direction. And I look forward to continuing that and celebrating many more successes in this next year with everyone. So thank you. We do have a closed session this evening. We'll take the motion for that, please.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation and confidential records pursuant to twenty-two point seven fifty as permitted under twenty-one point five one C. and Section twenty-one point five one K of Iowa Code of Iowa.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation and confidential records pursuant to Section twenty-two point seven five parentheses five zero as permitted under Section twenty-one point five one C of Section and Section twenty-one point five one K of the Code of Iowa. Okay, we'll take the legal statement.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed sessions and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Sections twenty-one point five one C and twenty-one point five one K.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Wasli?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Ms. Menzer?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. We are now in closed session, and we'll return to open session upon completion. Thank you for joining us. Have a good evening.